May everybody? Okay. We are now reconvening and I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out any actions taken in closed session.
Yes, on a seven to zero vote, the board approved the resignation of employment of a classified employee at Irvine Valley College.
Thank you trustee Lang. Now I have the invocation led by trustee Prendergast with the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Witt.
So, as part of the event that I'm representing tonight, I will share that every three minutes, somewhere in the world, a family hears the devastating news that their child has cancer. So I'd like to take a moment of silence to give as many good thoughts as you can to those families and those children. Thank you.
Please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance to this mighty country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do something fun right now, the swearing in of new student trustee Jonathan Ford. Where are we supposed to do this? Right here? Okay.
Supposed to do something or do something? Alright.
Raise your hand.
Raise, yeah, raise your right hand. Okay. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Ford.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the state of California.
That I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And not then, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will will, well, and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Big shoes to fill.
Alright, now we have public comments and I think we have two requests for public comments. Jan Estrangelo, and you want to come forward and I'd just like to remind folks who are making public comment to limit your remarks to two minutes.
Hello, good evening, President Jamal and members of the board of trustees and guests. This is Classified School Employee Week and our theme, what CSCA has chosen, the State Association, are everyday heroes. This year it's everyday heroes and everyday heroes are champions of change. CSCA this month sent three classified employees to Washington DC to, to talk about how they can help students better get funding for public schools and one of them happens to be from Laguna Beach. She's the president of their chapter at Margaret Water. CSCA is currently working with representatives from in Washington to promote a classified employee, a federal classified school employee of the year. So today, tonight, because we were able to successfully negotiate our collective bargaining agreement, which is something to be proud of because negotiating and coming to an agreement is required in government, okay? And we have that problem now nationally. Sometimes you have to, you know, just come to agreement. It's not what everybody wants, but it's, we've come to an agreement and we move on. So tonight I want to recognize the everyday heroes here that were part of that team, okay, on our negotiating team and Dr. David Bouquet, who was on the other side with Audrey DePoez Volver, David Kachatrain and Teddy Loach. Also we have here is Jerry Doolittle, he's an electrician down in maintenance and operations. Nathan Quoc, he works over in marketing and publications as a webmaster. And Vince Cooper, who works in media at IVC, as well as Shawna Morehouse. And these people all were behind me, helping us. People don't realize the amount of work that's involved in this, conducting election, making sure that all the rules are followed so nobody invalidates it, because this is, it models democracy. And it's, it's, people go out and vote, whether they vote yes or no, it's important that they vote because this is how it's done. And we're very proud that we had a very good outpouring of reflection, that people were in favor of it moving forward. We have to remember that the labor movement evolved out of the Industrial Revolution.
Jan, do you want to, Nathan, you want to yield your two minutes to Jan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Two more minutes.
Okay, and that's when there was huge profits reaped without regard to child labor laws or work safety. And today we can all celebrate Classified School Employee Week by realizing the advantages we've acquired from organized labor such as paid holidays, vacations, medical insurance, unemployment insurance, pensions and fixed schedules. These things all came out of organized labor. And CSCA today wants to recognize these heroes and we recognize all people who have received awards for Classified School Employees Week. And we're going to kick it off tomorrow morning at Saddleback by having a little continental breakfast available for those coming on break and so forth. And thank you very much and thank you David Bouquet.
Thank you. Okay, we're now on to board reports and why don't we start to my right trustee Prendergast.
Alright, let's see, April 27th, went to the Orange County School Board Association meeting, got an excellent presentation on how the education system is failing boys. Was not aware of that until we got the presentation, but the speaker made some good points. I'll let some of the other trustees speak more in detail on that. If it isn't obvious, I attended the St. Baldry's event on Monday, so this is a week of my hair growing back in and my wife is just really happy, it grows fast. So, the event from what I understand raised close to $3,500 so far. Nationally, St. Baldry's organization has raised last year $37 million. So far this year, and we're only in May, they've raised $27 million. So, they're well on their way to surpassing last year's amount and it obviously is for a very good cause. And I think, I don't know if I did all the checks right, but I think I did mine in honor of Supermax, but I'm not 100% sure. And then, the scholarship ceremony at Saddleback College was, was very nice. Really appreciated being a part of that and I look forward to commencement.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I have attended nine events since the last board meeting and we'll only talk about few of the events that were special to me. On May 4th, I attended the Saddleback Vet Program End of the Year Celebration. The Vet Program is eight and a half years old and it was started by Dr. Todd Burnett. Is now known as the best in the nation and many colleges and universities visit the Saddleback campus to learn about our program and to find out what makes it so special. Awards were given out and I'd like to congratulate Dr. Todd Burnett on being named the Administrator Manager of the Year. This was a complete surprise to him and I wanted to thank him for doing such a wonderful job with the vets. I also attended on May 10th, the IVC Foundation Board of Governors Committee Meeting. On May 23rd, 558 scholarships will be given out to the IVC students in the amount of $415,000. $62,000 was raised at the gala at the Marconi Automotive Museum. Next year, the gala will be held at the Cube in Santa Ana, that's the Discovery Museum. Professor Hewitt and Executive Director Alyssa Oransky have done an outstanding job with the foundation this year. Friday, May 13th, was the IVC Special Services Recognition Program. I attended that. It includes single parents, disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. A wonderful breakfast was served and about 387 students were recognized for their achievement and for the hardships they had endured. Certificates and recognition medallions were presented to these deserving students. The decorations, the ambiance of the, of the place was outstanding. I also attended the nursing pinning ceremony. But lastly, I wanted to talk about the College Foundation 40th Annual Scholarship Ceremony. This is what I love. I got to sit with the recipient of the Dr. William quote, Bill J Memorial Scholarship. The first thing the student did was to introduce me to her four-year-old daughter. That was a thrill and that was so special. She's a single mom who just was accepted in our nursing program, is so excited about becoming a nurse. Her outstanding personality, awareness, intelligence will be a tremendous asset to our nursing program. Of interest is that her father worked for Tuttle Click Automotive Group here and the Tuttle Click Automotive Group was the donor of the year. This was a very special event. It was a great, a great event and I thought it was wonderful and I want to turn it over, I've talked too much, to the, the next person.
Thank you trustee Jay, thank you for your contribution to the scholarship program at Saddleback. Thank you very much. So I only had two events this month unfortunately, both at Saddleback. I couldn't make the IVC events. I tried the nurses pinning ceremony, which was as usual, very exciting, enthusiastic affair. And I think for the third consecutive ceremony, the two leadership awards went to males even though the overwhelming majority of graduates were females, so I don't know what's, what's happening there, but nevertheless, it was an excellent ceremony. And then I attended on, at the speak, and got to speak at the Saddleback College Foundation Scholarship Awards on Friday and I want to really praise Todd and Don Rickner and Mike Hamilton, the entire board of that foundation, particularly Todd Burnett. I think that when that foundation started a few years ago, I think they had $400,000, $500,000, and through Todd's leadership, he's taken it up to, I think, close to $11 million through his perseverance and tireless work ethic in the community and no one works harder than Todd. I know he puts in a lot of hours and I really, and I know that Don does a great job, but I think if Don were here, he would probably echo the sentiments that there's no way he could have raised that kind of money in the community without, without Todd's support. So, I know he's not here with us tonight, but I wanted to recognize him for that. Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
Thank you very much. I was fortunate to be able to attend about seven events this, these last three weeks. Most of these events are very well done and I just want to applaud both colleges, IVC and Saddleback, for the events that I did attend. I did attend this Orange County School Board Association Annual Dinner Meeting. I was talking more about, our speaker was a speaker by the name of Richard Holly and he was talking about the fact that in the United States, women in the United States now earn 62% of all associate degrees, 57% of all baccalaureate degrees, 60% of master's degrees and 52% of a doctorates. And it says, "Boys create the most discipline problems." But the thing that he was doing is, he was telling us about his research that he had done and he was giving us some suggestions that they have come up with to make, to try to help young men and boys succeed in academics. I also attended the vets ceremony, their, their end of the year celebration. It's the seventh one they've had and it was, it was well done. They, they had special recognition of a number of people. Loma Hopkins, Hopkins is one that, that I remember and she's retiring and she'll be missed. I also wanted to indicate that I attended the Cinco de Mayo Talk that was given here at Saddleback College. That was very well done. Learned a little bit more about Cinco de Mayo. But I wanted to talk for just a minute about the, the recognition at IVC that I attended. This was the college-wide recognition in which at IVC, it was an informal celebration. They recognized and committed IVC faculty and staff for their special achievements during the 2015, 2016 academic year, as well as outstanding individuals. And as a result of this, I just wanted to comment a little bit about one act, one award that they gave. This was to the IVC Robotics Activities Group. They, in recognition, they won first place in the ground rob, robot division designed to assist first responders to locate and assist victims of structural collapse during the UCI Rescue Robotics Competition held in April of 2016. And they also gave me a, a decal and this was supposed to be given to our president of our, of our, it was to be given to our board president and I wanted to give this to Tim Jamal. They gave it to me to give to you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lang.
Yes, first of all, I wanted to congratulate our former student trustee, Mr. Momand, in absentia, on the terrific job that he did in representing students of this district and offer my good wishes to Jonathan Ford on the occasion of his joining us as the new student trustee with my full expectation and belief that he will do an equally great job of representing the students as well. We've really had the great fortune here of wonderful student trustees who've honorably represented our students over the many years that I've had the privilege of serving on this board. So you're joining a great tradition here. We will be recognizing a number of employees in Resolution 5.2, so I won't bother to repeat all those names, but I do want to congratulate all the individuals that are indicated there on your recognition as class, as various, on your various outstanding service awards and also on the professor, associate professor, emeritus institute professor and the outstanding classified and athletic trainer, all of, again, who are mentioned in 5.2 who we'll hear from. I also wanted to recognize though, or separately recognize, a number of people that I noted in President Rockmore's report, different IVC faculty members, including Bennett Chikovsky, Sanjay Gupta, Jeff Kaufman, Matthew Carlson and Miriam Castor-Kande, who are recognized by UCI for being named by transfer students as instructors or counselors who significantly influenced their academic achievements and performance when they went on to UCI. Very meaningful, as far as I'm concerned. And finally, I just wanted to say how much I'm looking forward again to attending a graduation commencement ceremony. It's always a highlight of the year, at least for me. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Lang. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, this is a very busy time of the year. It's, it's right prior to the two commencements that we're both looking forward to, so there's a lot of events. I attended over 20 events since the last board meeting and I'm going to try to just read the list to try to get through them in two minutes. Many of them are really worth talking about, but I just don't have the time to do it. I attended the Larry at Open House at Saddleback College, the Student Body Newspaper. They also do video editing. They do, they teach all these different things to our students about learning how to run a newspaper and, and to do video and, and to actually run podcasts. I attended One College One Book, the All College Book Club at, at Saddleback College event. The book was Five and Twenty-Fives. It was a novel by Michael Petrie and he's a veteran and he spoke to all of the students and all the faculty members who read the One College One Book and brought the college together. They have a whole college book club is a pretty exciting thing and they're going to do another book next year. I attended the Saddleback College Student, Student Artist Awards Ceremony, the Saddleback College Career Fair, the Orange County School Boards Association Dinner Meeting and they, they are, they did talk about how to help boys succeed as well as, as girls have been succeeding lately, which is a good thing. I attended the IVC, some of the student debaters at IVC gave some presentations and I attended that. I attended the Irvine Valley College Newly Tenured Faculty Event, the Cinco de Mayo Event at Saddleback College where Gregorio Luke spoke about the Cinco de Mayo Battle. It was very exciting. I was invited to speak at SoCal University, their 15th Anniversary International Celebration. I brought greetings from the Board of Trustees, spoke with the other elected officials there, talked to the president again, because I had been there when it was first dedicated 15 years ago and I told them I'd be back for their 16th Sweet 16 Party next year. I attended the Settler Cock Journalism Department Awards Banquet, the Saddleback College Nurse Pinning Ceremony, always a favorite, the Saddleback College Transfer Celebration and Honors Recognition Event, the Saddleback Scholarship Award Ceremony where our student body president here, William Vezadaya, is that right? Close? Yeah, when they pronounce my name wrong and then I say it again, I think people really learn it, so I really like that. So, so you got it right. Thank you. You did a fabulous job, I'm seeing. You should be up here someday. I think, I think you will be. And they actually gave out over $700,000 worth of scholarships. As, as one of my colleagues said, they have over $11 million of endowed scholarships. So that was brought up like, like fourfold since the last eight years, so they've done a fabulous job raising money. I attended, trustee Jay and I had an all morning ATEP tour this morning. I attended the Saddleback College Scholar Baller Event today, which was very good. All our scholar athletes, the students, many of the students get four point as well as being in athletics and so many of our coaches were the coach of the year from, from all over California. Just incredible. And I also attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force Meeting at Rancho Santiago Community College District and next year, our district will be chairing it. So that's a very exciting thing to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Witt.
Quickly, for the sake of time, I attended the Orange County School Board Association Networking Session. I was unable to stay for the dinner, but I have to tell you that networking was as helpful as maybe the lecture that I missed. I'm sorry I didn't go to IVC Campus Community Recognition. I really planned on that, but I will be there on the 23rd for the scholarship. Also, obviously, I attended the nursing pinning ceremony. I probably have been to at least 70, 80, maybe 90 of them. And I want to tell you, it's not like watching the movie over and over again. Every single pinning ceremony comes with, with more integrity, more fun. They, they really share the fun that they had, not only the hard work that they did, but all of that comes out on stage. It is absolutely a delight. We should pay admission. And then I also attended the Saddleback Foundation Retreat. That was a Saturday. Unfortunately, I had to go to a wedding, so I could only come to the morning. But that morning that I, what I attended was valuable and we ended up talking about values. It was, it was, it was valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, and welcome aboard again, student trustee Ford.
Thank you. I haven't attended as many events as the rest of the board of trustees, yet. So we'll see how many I get to go. I know I'm a slacker, I gotta pick it up. I did get to go to the Student Government Awards Ceremony, which was really nice. So those are awards given out to students for their service to student government at Irvine Valley College. Myself and a few other students won some awards and we were able to give a beautiful plaque out to Sessa Heard Johnson, our new director of student life for her service to the college and to the students. That was nice. I went to Psy Beta's Award Ceremony. That's the National Honors Society on Psychology. We have a branch, a club there. It was pretty good, had a really good time. I really want to thank all the students at Irvine Valley College for allowing me this opportunity, voting me to be their student trustee and to serve the South Orange, Orange County Community College District over this next year. I'm looking forward to it as a learning opportunity, an opportunity to network and foremost, an opportunity to serve the needs of, of students within the district. So, thank you all for letting me be here.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to the consent calendar? Oh, we're not. No, no, no. I guess we're not there yet. I was way ahead. Alright, chancellor's report. Wow. The clock thinking we're further along.
As the trustees mentioned, there's been a large number of end of year activities that have been going on and it's, it's always a rush towards the end of the year and we got commencement coming up already next Tuesday. So I'd like to take this opportunity to, again, to thank all of our employees. We have some 3,600 employees all working to help those students that are sitting in those chairs. And I want to thank all of them for another year of job well done, particularly the faculty who are the, the front line of, of working with our students. I want to thank them. And for those that are, that are leaving for the summer and not teaching classes during that time, I wish you well and great deal of rest and relaxation and come back enthused.
Thank you. College presidents' reports.
Thank you very much, President Jamal. First of all, to welcome Jonathan Ford. I've had an opportunity to work with him the last year and I'm certain that he'll make great contributions on the dais and so, welcome. Also not here tonight is Adam Tatunji. She's, he is our ASIVC president. So this is his last night, so farewell to him wherever he may be, probably studying for finals, I would guess. So we'll have someone else new in the coming board meeting. Lastly, I'd like to introduce our new director of annual giving and development services, Melissa Martinez. She's in the audience, she can stand here. And let me just read something about her quickly. She has 15 years of development experience. Through her career, she's developed an extensive background in annual giving, event planning, donor stewardship and volunteer organizations. She has an AA degree from Mount SAC, a bachelor's degree from CSU Fullerton and a master's from the University of La Verne. She's a longtime member of the Association of Fundraising Professionals and the Association of Donor Relation Professionals. So welcome to Melissa.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. We have, Todd's not here this evening, but we have Juan Avalos.
Yes, Juan Avalos, I'm vice president of student services, pinching for Todd tonight. First and foremost, Dr. Burnett wanted me to thank all of you who have had an opportunity to come out and support the college at the various events that we've had. We want you to know that your presence is felt by the college and it's felt by the students. All those moments is always wonderful to see the student and the family cherishing in long accomplishments. You could feel that for some, it's a long, it's been a long journey and it's nice to see them sort of hit that finish line. So we thank you for sharing that with our students. Couple of things along the same note, and we do a very good job of celebrating students and celebrating, and supporting them. This last Friday, many of you have spoken to the scholarship event and I wanted to highlight that again because it is a very important event. It goes to a great cause. And as been mentioned, we awarded over $732,000 to just about 450 students, which is a major increase from a number of years ago. In 2013, the amount awarded was about $510,000, so a significant amount. You know, definitely kudos to President Burnett and our foundation. We will be having our employee student recognition on Wednesday. It's, and IVC already had theirs. We're going to do something similar where we take our time and acknowledge every faculty member, staff, students who have had wonderful accomplishments. So it'll be from 3:00 to 5:00 PM in the McKinney Theater. For those of you that can make it, we'd like for you to join us. And then finally, commencement, the ultimate celebration of student success will be happening next Tuesday, 9:00 AM at the Saddleback College in Nazium. And I want to welcome And I want to welcome student trustee Ford. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Juan. We have now ASG Saddleback College. I don't think we have ASG here from IVC, so, William, you're up.
All right. Hello, everyone, Board of Trustees, chancellor Porter. Good evening. This is awesome. It's been a great year. I'm so happy. This is my last board meeting, so I want to just begin by thanking everybody on the board, everyone in the audience. It's because of you that now I can go to UC Berkeley. When I came here three years ago, that didn't seem possible initially when I came in, but I've learned so much. I'm really grateful that we all live in a place where a student like me is able to represent the voice of others and serve. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I went to the foundation retreat as well with trustee Witt and Lucy, who's sitting behind me. That was very interesting, very informative. I'm happy to see the foundation growing. Thank you all who came to the foundation event, the scholarship ceremony. As always, I always stress this, I'll do it even the last time, our big need at Saddleback, from the student perspective, is going to be facilities, specifically the cafeteria. There are some restrooms that are in need of repair and funding. If you go to the BGS Building, for example, you will see that some of the bathroom stalls don't lock. There is need there. The Vet Center is too small for all the veterans. It is a great, great vet program. As you saw, their scholarship ceremony took my friend Greg from a 0.0 GPA to success and now transferring. So, but it does still need more room. I'm really excited for the stadium coming up. I know when I, the first year I came here, it was just an idea. Now it's really growing. I hope that is getting, you know, I hope we can come back here in a few years and see that built out. And in closing, I want to say that I'm very excited that our fountain project, our water bottle refill station, was funded by President Burnett. I'm so happy that he gave us the opportunity to take that project on as ASG and make it happen, and he kind of mentored us and showed us and helped us succeed. So big thanks to him, even though he's not here. I've thanked him before, but I wanted to thank him here as well. So you will be seeing those refillable water stations coming up. So thank you very much, and I hope that you continue to engage like trustee Milchiker. Thank you again for coming to lecture, that was a great event. And I hope that more trustees come to more ASG events and we get to, as informal, hang out together. All right, thank you very much.
Sounds good, William. You're not going to lead us in the cheer?
Go Gauchos.
That's for those of you who were at the scholarship ceremony. William led the entire gymnasium, and some cheers for Saddleback College did a great job. All right, we don't have any board requests for reports, but I wanted to say that we haven't forgotten the issue of Workday. That was a report that was supposed to be presented this evening, but has, it was my request, but it will be presented at the June board meeting. So was supposed to be at today's session, but due to the ATEP hearing and work involved with that, we delayed it by one month. All right, I don't think we have any discussion items, so moving on to the, now moving on to the consent calendar, do we, I have a poll, 5.5. Are there any other polls?
5.13. I think 5.5 is the...
I don't understand. 5.5 is removed.
Okay, 5.5 has been removed.
Okay.
All right.
I have...
Right. Okay. Okay, 5.13, trustee Wright?
5.2 and 5.14.
And I have 5.19.
5.19, okay. Any others? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the items?
Second.
Okay, I think I have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Milchiker. No further discussion. Go ahead and cast your vote. Okay, unanimous yes vote, and your first cast vote. Congratulations, student advisory yes vote. All right, so the first item is 5.5. How do you?
5.2, maybe?
It's been, 5.5 is, it's going to come back next month. Okay. So 5.21, Marsha?
Yeah, 5.2. The reason I removed it is I've noticed that instead of reading these resolutions, we've put them on the consent calendar, and I'm wondering, this is my personal feeling, that these people, they're like our Classified Employee of the Year, our Faculty Member of the Year. It's nice to just recognize them in public, but can we do something like, like have just a very small paragraph about each one, not read the whole resolution, and take it off the consent calendar? I mean, how do other people feel about this?
What's your, so what do you?
My feeling is not to have them on the consent calendar, have them on the regular agenda so that we would read the resol, but not read the whole resolution, just read like a paragraph about each person.
Well, why don't we let the chancellor address that? I think it was a change proposed by the district.
It's been changed for quite some time, maybe six months.
The advice or the, on consent from the colleges, right? So do you want to talk about this, Gary?
It hasn't been six months. It's been, this is the second month.
Oh, it just seems like six months.
It just seemed like six, right.
Sun flies when you're having fun.
And the reason that, I discussed this with the presidents, they both concurred. And number one, it takes a lot of time at a board meeting to read sometimes many, many, many resolutions like you have here. And then the students or employees that are being honored don't really get the recognition that they would in their own college. So for instance, if you had been at the IVC recognition event last Friday, you would have seen that everyone was very happy, and it was informal, it was an extremely nice event. They got the recognition that they deserved, and I think they felt much better about it. That's the purpose of all this, rather than a few people that are able to make it that didn't have class or some such thing show up here and they get their picture taken, but the rest of the team isn't here. So you get a lot better attendance. At least that was the experience at IVC.
I think it was my idea, actually, to make, give resolutions to the Classified Employee of the Year and the Teacher of the Year, because I said, this is what we do. This is what we do as an institution, we teach. So let's give recognition to our Teachers of the Year and the part-time teachers of the Year. But I mean, what about just giving like a paragraph to each one, not reading the whole resolution, because that takes way too long.
Well, the resolution is in the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you don't have to read the whole.
And it isn't that we don't give the Employee of the Year awards anymore, we still do give them. And they're honored at meetings of their peers. So if you want it back here, if the board decides that that's what they want to do, we'll do that.
Well, we could discuss it.
Well, Marsha, are you suggesting you want some kind of ceremony and public recognition?
Yeah, that's what I meant, like a public recognition.
Oral recognition at our...
But not necessarily where they read the whole resolution, because that would take a very long time at a meeting like today, but something like one, one small paragraph about each person that's being honored and to give the recognition in public. Because I mean, this is like a Teacher of the Year, this is our Classified Employee of the Year. I mean, I think it's a nice thing to do, but I'm just one board member out of seven, so obviously I can't, I only have one vote, obviously.
Oh, you're much more than that, though. Trustee Prendergast.
I tell you, this sounds like something that could be brought up on Saturday's retreat.
Okay, that's a good idea. Thanks.
Okay, so can we move the item?
Yeah, I'll move the item then.
Okay, motion by trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second by trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, Jim, trustee Wright, I think you polled 5.13?
Yes, I did. I certainly want to, I'll certainly vote to get rid of these five Capri Day sailboats. It looks like they're, they're not very seaworthy. I think they're 28 and 30 years old. My question is, do we have replacements for these?
What's that question for?
That'd be a question for...
The answer is yes. Yes, they already bought replacements, and these are the old ones they're disposing.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Any further discussion on the item? Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, trustee Milchiker, I think you had 5.14. Turn on your mic.
Thank you so much. I don't, thank you. It says here that it's for Nudesic, which is our consultant that we use all the time, and it says here that it's for Student Success Dashboard in MySite Development for $188,000. But is Nudesic the company we use for help with Workday?
No.
No.
No, it's not. Okay. So this company, we, I know that, Nudesic is a name familiar to me. So this is a company that, they're helping us write software for the Student Success Dashboard in MySite? Is that what they're doing?
Yes, we use nine different consultancies in IT, but Nudesic is the largest one. The MySite 3.0 project is to revamp the portal that students use, to add, among other things, student success widgets and information to that. Recently, one of the colleges through Triple SP funds got some money that they wish to augment our existing Basic Aid project with, so that's what this money is for. This is in addition to the money that we already had.
Okay, so that makes sense, to incorporate student success scoreboard into their MySite portal, so they could always know where they are academically according to the Student Success Dashboard?
Yes.
Hey, I just had a question. What, because I knew, Marsha mentioned Nudesic comes up a lot. I mean, how much in contracts are we providing to Nudesic overall? Do you know? The dollar amount?
Yeah, I could get that information. They are the single largest consultancy that helped us build a student information system, so many of their consultants are the experts in those areas, so we continue to go to them for those functions.
And just to add to that, we did an RFP for consulting services, and more than one consultant was in a pool, and then we draw from them, and then we bring them individually. I don't know if you recall, the process is we bring then each item to you as a work order, and that's what this is.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion? A motion by trustee Lang, second by, I'll give it to trustee Milchiker. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Finally, trustee Jay, 5.19.
On these purchase order, or the contracts, there's one here for Workday, and it's for $22,000.
Could you tell me what page you're on?
Huh?
Can you tell me what page you're on? Okay, I see it. Yes.
Yeah, 2 of 15.
Yes, that's the professional services agreement for the Employee Recruitment Services Module that we're going to be getting to work on. Yes, is part of our overall scope.
Is that somebody, is that to help people understand Workday?
No, that has nothing to do with it. This is a contract with Workday to purchase their employee recruitment module in which we're going to be starting to, you know, when candidates apply to work here at the district through HR, this is to work on that module.
It's not, wasn't it included in the original agreement with Workday?
No, it was part of the overall scope that we already intended to, but we didn't want to pay for it two years ahead of when we're going to implement that phase. That wouldn't be smart as far as fiscally sound, so we wanted to bring it when we were ready to do it.
Okay, and you'll be talking next month on Workday?
Yes, we are, yes.
Okay. And the other one is the Hyatt Hotels and Resorts, $17,000. Facility Agreement for College Administrators and Managers Retreat in Palm Springs. Why Palm Springs?
That's a place that Saddleback College is having their managers retreat, and that's been recommended by the college president to go to Palm Springs for that retreat.
It sounds like an awful lot of money for that.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The college can maybe speak on that if Juan would like to do that.
Not sure that I can answer the question, other than that's where we've gone. I think it's close enough where people get away, but in terms of the particulars as to why that location versus other locations, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
How many people will be going?
All right, if, this for the management retreat?
Yes.
The managers, there are about 40 to 50 managers at Saddleback, and it's the one time of the year that we get together as an entire team.
Okay, it would be for 40 and 50 people. Okay, fine, thank you.
It's not the exact number, but it's in that ballpark.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by trustee Lang.
Second.
Second by trustee Jay. Oh, sorry, trustee Prendergast. I keep missing you.
Back on the Workday item, just to clarify, is this similar to EdJoin as far as people can go to a site and then they see job postings, and then they apply through that? So it's a portal for that?
We currently have an electronic employee application system, so when people apply for a job, it's called People Admin. We're shifting from People Admin to Workday, and that way, we'll be able to pre-populate the employee file. So what happens, on this module, they'll apply for a job, those employees that get accepted a job, instead of them coming in for three hours without the paperwork, we push a button, and all the paperwork actually populates off the application. So it's a step up from what we currently have. So this is going to replace the electronic application module we currently have.
So again, it says it's a recruiting service module, so...
Yes.
Like, again, presently, if I'm looking for a job at community college level, I assume there's one site I can go to. Are we creating our own or being part of a separate one, or is this connected to that?
No, this is, this is, this would be accessible from our college website and be the actual source where you apply for a job.
I see. So they might see the posting through an EdJoin type thing, but then to actually apply, they go to this module, and then you screen those applicants for...
Actually, we use a thing called the registry, CCC Registry.
Okay.
And our applications are available right off there. So you actually go to the registry, which is a statewide, it's very similar to what you're discussing, but a statewide for community colleges. And you can actually apply for a job right off of that using this system.
So this connects to that registry?
It will. We currently have a different system, but this will replace that.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I think we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, now we're on to general action items. 6.1, Consolidated Elections for Members of Governing Boards. Is, am I going to speak to this?
Move approval.
Motion by trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second by trustee Wright. Any discussion on the item? Okay, go ahead and vote. Trustee Jay.
Oh.
Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.2, South Orange County Community College District Emergency Operations Plan. Approve the emergency operations plan. Any comments from the administration on this? Vice Chancellor Bremici.
This is a plan that we have to have filed on stage should we wish reimbursement after an emergency.
Okay. Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Any further questions on the item? Okay, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.3, Long-Awaited IVC Baranca Entrance Project.
No changes to the item.
No changes to the item.
I'm sorry, I would like to go back to the last item for just a second.
Sure, the 6.2?
Yes. I just noticed on the front page that it's dated July 2014. Yeah, I just wanted to comment.
Well, it is, you're right.
I noticed on Exhibit A, it's dated July 2014.
That's a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch.
Good eyes, good eyes.
All right, 6.3, the IVC Baranca Entrance. No changes to the item?
No changes. It's approving the agreement for Hillcrest Contracting for $1.4 million.
Okay, any questions for Deborah?
I have approval.
Motion by trustee Wright, second by trustee Jay to approve the item. Any other discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee approval, student advisory yes vote. Item 6.4, Board Policy Revision, Course Repetition Except for Review and Study.
Just one policy before you... Just one policy before you tonight for review and study, and you can see that significant language is being taken out and removed over to Ministry of Regulation.
Okay. Motion by trustee Lang?
Second.
Second by trustee Wright. Any other discussion on the item? Go ahead and cast your vote. Item is approved, unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.5, Board Policy Revision, Institutional Plan, In-Traffic and Parking, Credit by Examination, Specific Course Credit, Student Fees. No, no changes to the item?
Move approval.
Or motion, motion by trustee Prendergast, a second by trustee Jay. Any other discussion? Okay, go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous, well, not quite. Unanimous trustee approval, student advisory yes vote. Okay, 6.6, Academic Personnel Items, Regular Items.
Move approval.
No changes.
No changes to the item. Motion by trustee Milczek.
Second.
A second by, I think, trustee Witt? Was that you?
That's fine.
Okay, second by trustee Witt. Any, any further discussion? Go ahead and vote. Unanim, I think it's unanimous.
Sorry.
Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Classified Personnel Action Items.
Move approval.
We'll set it before you.
Motion by trustee Milczek. Is there a second? Second by trustee Jay. Is any, I have a question, I see that trustee Prendergast has a question. Go ahead. I just, I guess, I saw, this is like for Dr. Rockmore on the reclassification, if you wanna just talk about that, the rationale for what you're doing there.
Absolutely, very happy to do so. The college has been faced with a number of issues in regard to being able to meet the thirst of the institution for marketing and outreach. Uh, for example, uh, just in 2014, 2015, there were over 600 different jobs in the queue. Uh, so between our performing arts, uh, you know, all of, all of the arts department and, and the concerts, as well as a number of the new programs that we are developing and that we're associated with, um, we're finding it to be very difficult for this department to keep up with that work. And, uh, it creates a fair amount of stress on the institution because there's, uh, an importance to marketing, uh, the college, and particularly all of our programs that are associated with it. Uh, so, looking at trying to solve that problem, we did a fair amount of research and worked with some outside firms to try to find the best combination that would give us the best opportunity, uh, to get us back where we need to be for the benefit of IVC.
Okay, so you feel confident about this? Is it a reorg or reclassification or both?
It's, uh, reclassifications are embedded into the, the reorg, and so there's some position changes, and there's a, an additional position to help out there as well.
Okay, trustee Prendergast.
So, so my question is, is based on, so you're, you're reclassifying, I get that, and it happens a lot, and that's fine. It's, it's the jump from salary range from 16 to 21, and another person's salary range from, what is that?
18.
Eight to 10. I, I mean, I don't know what these mean in dollar amounts, but that seems like a, a big leap. Uh, is it that much more work they're going to be doing, or, or what, how does that work?
It's, it's actually a combination of more work and more responsible work, and so that becomes part of it as well. Um, the dollar amounts are, I had those here, but, um, we've been able to find a budget for that. But let me give you a comparison, is that the position that is recommended here is a, uh, is, is actually an executive director, and so it'd be similar to our foundation executive director. Now, the difference is that that particular position is a 22, and, uh, so when we did the calculations, we felt that this one actually should come in as a, uh, actually a 21. And so that person would jump from 16 to 21, um, and, you know, there's some dollars there, but it's not exorbitant at all.
But it's justified by the amount of work they're doing in comparison to an equal job?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Is there a different level of accountability for that position as far as oversight and, you know?
Well, management responsibilities, cause when you give the title of executive director, you're applying a higher level of management, so how many direct reports will this person have?
Exactly. Well, currently, there are 11, and so, uh, that's, that's one point. But it actually will add one additional direct report to it, so it'll be, I think, a total of 12. And that position reports directly to me.
Got it. Okay, any further, trustee Prendergast, do you have any other questions? Okay, I think we had a motion in a second, I believe, and let's go ahead and, any, no further discussion, go ahead and vote. Item passes, unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Uh, Sabbatical Rescindment, 6.8.
Move approval.
Motion by trustee Milczek, second by trustee Wright. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Trustee Witt, I think I need you to vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.9, Destruction of Class III Disposable Records.
I just have one, one question. Um, is, is, does code tell you which of the records you dispose of? That's totally, totally by code? Cause I noticed there are different years that you're, um, disposing of records for different, um, items.
We, we have a very specific policy that goes in extensive detail, identifying certain custodian of records and so on, so we use the codes, different types of codes, actually, and that created a policy with, with a specific schedule. So this is an annual item that we bring to the board of trustees about this time every single year. If the board approves this tonight, then our next step, believe it or not, is we actually ask the state chancellor's office if they want the records. And if they say no, then we dispose of them. So, I don't, it's a state law, so we're following law on this, so.
Okay, thanks.
What, okay, I, I got you, TJ. Motion, uh, by trustee Lang?
Second.
Second by trustee Wright, trustee Prendergast.
Just clarifying, is this just, is this shredding, like, do we do it, or do we hire a company? Do we farm it out? How are these disposed of?
For the most part, we do, uh, there, we, we actually have a shredding service on, on standby as well. Now, a lot of them are going electronically, but even electronic records, we have to bring before the board of trustees and, and before we push the button to delete them, so.
Okay. Seeing no further questions on 6.9, go ahead and vote on the item. I think trustee Milczek, you need to vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.10, EEO Plan, approve the district's Equal Opportunity Plan. Nothing to add, trust, vice chancellor?
It's, it's pretty much self-explanatory. A lot of this, we, we spent a lot, a long, long time actually finalizing this and writing, and having to plan district-wide how we plan on doing this. This, this was done a district-wide task force, so what, if the board approves this tonight and adopts it, this will become one of our programs, we actually administer annually.
Okay. Uh, hold on a second, trustee Lang.
Yes. Would you care to comment on how this plan, in its updated form, uh, might differ from, uh, the prior year, I presume, three-year plan that we would've done?
Before, we did not have a specific plan this detailed. This is, this is written after a model proposed on a statewide committee on this. So, so we took that model, we took the very essentials of it, we improved a couple spots in it, but in essence, this is the template that we have to have across the state. So every community college in the state is supposed to have one of these, um, plans approved by the board of trustees.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on the item?
It says, it says it's through 2019, does that mean you don't have to redo it again till 2019?
Correct.
Okay, excellent.
And also, there's gonna be an EEO Advisory Committee on top of this that reviews the plan on an annual basis. If there's any needed changes that we have to make to the plan between now and 2019, we'll bring it back to the board of trustees. But this committee will actually be active in reviewing how HR does the equal employment opportunity as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion on the item, go ahead and cast your vote. Oh, we need, I thought we had a, need a motion.
Um, so move.
Motion by trustee Milczek.
Second.
Second by trustee Jay. Seeing no further discussion, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're now at 6.11, CSEA Master Agreement.
Move approval.
Motion by trustee Milczek.
Second.
Second by trustee Witt. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Trustee Witt. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're on to Reports, 7.0, Saddleback College Professors of the Year. Mr. Avalos.
Just briefly, wanna identify who our recipients are this year. Uh, for our Professor of the Year, Full-Time Professor, Steve Tay in the Division of Mathematics, Science, and Engineering, so congratulations to him. Um, our Part-Time Professor of the Year is Jeff Oderlin, Division of Liberal Arts, so congratulations to him. And then the, uh, the next one, Lisa Messinger, uh, as our Emeritus Institute Professor of the Year. And then finally, this is kind of one of those interesting things, when we do this process to feed into the Orange County Professor of the Year, and typically, the one you forward from your college goes forward, but they have this rule that you can't win it, like, so many times, or if you won it, and so, we have excellence on this college, and we found ourselves in that situation where Steve Tay can't move forward because he already won it, so then we had to forward a different name, and, um, very happy to note that Saddleback College has selected Claire Stasariot from the Division of Social and Behavioral Sciences. She will be our nominee for the Orange County Teacher of the Year Award, so congratulations. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. 7.2, Saddleback Col, oh, trustee Wright, sorry.
I just wanted to comment here, Steve Tay's been here 16 years, uh, he's been a wonderful instructor. It's the second time he's won the award.
Wow.
So, that's why, uh, we had to get an alternate, and that was Claire, so.
Good, Claire.
He's a wonderful instructor.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Okay, 7.2, Saddleback College and IVC Speakers, listing of speakers for events and classes at Saddleback College and IVC. Any additions to that? Uh, 7.3, Saddleback, I mean, District Basic Aid Report.
No changes since last month.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Monthly Financial, 7.4, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.5, Facilities Plans, oh, sorry, trustee Wright. Which item, 7.4?
Yeah, 7, no, 7.5.
7.5.
I just wanted to, I had a question about, uh, the, the Techno Applied Science Building. Uh, I thought that they moved out in January, but they don't have a, they don't have a con, I guess the agreement or the contract to renovate that building hasn't been approved. How come?
No, not yet. We're working on finalizing the plans. It's in what's called a constructibility review process to ensure that we have tight plans for a good bid for you, and we're expecting that process to be complete. There have been some changes that needed to go to DSA, and we're looking at, you know, I'm gonna have to get back to you on the exact bid date, I don't have it off the top of my head. I'm thinking it's early fall, though.
Yeah, I, I was concerned, because I know they planned on having it completed by March 2018, and I know they moved out.
Quite some time ago, over the.
Yeah, moved out in, in December.
The winter break, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, I believe that the projected completion date is not impacted at this time, however.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now we're on to 7.6, Quarterly Investment Report. Any comments or additions? Seeing none? All right, we made up some time tonight. 8.0, Reports From Administration and Governance Groups, Saddleback College Academic Senate, Blake Stevens.
Good evening, President Jamal, and members of the board of trustees. Uh, today is the last day of instruction in the spring semester. Finals begin tomorrow, and I want to tell you that I'm optimistic about the future of our community because of the very high quality of our students. Um, the success they achieve in our colleges speaks to a bright future for all of us. Um, I want to thank the faculty of Saddleback College for allowing me to serve them, representing the academic senate here. Um, and I'd like to thank my dean, Tony Tang, for all of his support through this year. Um, I heard that I have rollover seconds from all of my president's reports for the whole year. I have 27 seconds extra, I've counted them, might use them up this year, we'll see. Um, so finally, I want to publicly honor the leadership of our college, President Todd Burnett, Vice Presidents Kathy Worley, Carol Hilton, and Juan Avalos. I have certificates I'm gonna hand to them in a minute, and it reads very simply to all of them, "In appreciation of your leadership, vision, and ongoing support for our faculty, staff, and students, thank you very much for the leadership of our college, and I've enjoyed working with all of them this year, and I thank you for letting me represent the college here." Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Blake, well-earned. Faculty Association.
Uh, good evening. Um, on the agenda tonight are two, um, items that I would like to comment on. First, there are two retirements, Loma Hopkins from Saddleback College and Stephen Lee from IVC, and both Loma and Stephen have been wonderful assets to, uh, the colleges, to our students, and to the Faculty Association. Uh, both were involved at the, in the Faculty Association at various points in their career. Loma, in particular, has been working diligently for the past six years on behalf of the Faculty Association and our membership, as our membership chair, uh, and has done a wonderful job. So I want to thank both Loma and Steve for their service, and wish them both a fabulous life in retirement. Um, second, two faculty members have been appointed as new deans in the district, Tracy Fahimi at IVC and Penny Scaff at Saddleback College, and I am pleased to see that we are recognizing the strengths and abilities of our faculty in this way, and I am sure that both Tracy and Penny will be excellent administrators. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we have IVC Academic Senate, I Biology.
Thank you, good evening. Well, since I'm going to be continuing on as senate president, no one gets any awards from me. But maybe there'll be a nice goodbye eventually, sometime. Um, I wanted to mention Tracy Fahimi also. I, I know you have a short bio of her in the agenda, and obviously, you've seen her paperwork, but she was actually my first office mate when I arrived here at IVC and at, at South County, it was then Saddleback District. Um, and so I've known her for a good long time, and I've known her as a faculty member and a leader in the, among the faculty, and during this past year as an interim dean, where, in my opinion, she's done a bang-up job. And, uh, so we're looking forward to having her now as a permanent dean, and I think you, everyone, the hiring committee, the administration, and you all did a fabulous job in, in deciding to hire her for that position. Um, I also wanna mention, you approved as part of the IVC curriculum two biotech programs, two small programs, but we also received news today, and I'm going to just read to you, "The IVC Biotechnology Program has been accepted as an official affiliate program of BioLink. BioLink is the next-generation national advanced technology education, ATE, sorry, computer, uh, Center of Excellence for Biotechnology and Life Sciences. BioLink originated in late 1998 with a grant from the National Science Foundation, and is a national ATE center for biotechnology. And so when you go to the BioLink pa, uh, website, we actually have an IVC page that's all about the IVC biotech program. So our biotechnology program is growing apace, thanks mostly to Emily McKenzie, Diana Hurlbut has also been involved in it, and the rest of us have been involved to greater or lesser extent, but really spearheaded by, by Emily, and I wanted to recognize her this evening. Thank you."
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services.
No report.
Okay, Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
We have a couple things happening. The faculty contract was approved by the board of trustees several months ago, but we're actually in the process of implementing some newer parts to it, including. actually in the process of implementing some newer parts to it, including having a mandatory staff development day for new faculty. We have a, probably a first, and it was really initiated by Claire, of the idea of, on the, the last Friday of Professional Development Week, we will have a New Faculty Orientation Day. It'll start early in the morning, go throughout the whole day. It's a joint process, I'll have, Blake has agreed to present, as well as Kathy Schmider and Claire, we're going to, so HR starts, then we have a session, Faculty Association buys lunch, which is really good, anytime they do. And then we have an afternoon of HR items, so it's a joint presentation, it's kind of one of those things we, we get out of having a good contract, we implement it together. The other one, I was totally surprised, you may have noticed that Jan Mistrangelo is not always quiet. So when the board approved the contract, there was no round of applause, I was totally surprised, I think that's overdue, I think it'd be appropriate to applaud the completion of that contract. And that's my report, thank you.
I thought we did clap, okay. Go back and watch the tape. Vice Chancellor Business Services.
Yes, you might have noticed that the Governors May Revised came out over the weekend. I wanted to share some highlights, you are going to see a lot of information at our tentative budget document and approval and presentation next month, but just to give you a little bit of a sneak peek. Unfortunately, 0% COLA, down from his January proposal of 0.47%, so it's at zero, which is very unfortunate. 2% statewide growth opportunity, $30 million in increase in basic skills funding, 248 million increase in economic development, 71.4 million increase in physical plan and instructional equipment funds, these are one-time funds, 498.5 million decrease in mandated backlog funds, and those are one-time funds as well, 75 million for base funding augmentation, and no new funds for full-time faculty. So what does this mean for our district? We're looking at, obviously, $0 associated with the 0% COLA for the new budget year. The base augmentation is about a 1.2%, which is only about $1.6 million district-wide. The growth cap is estimated for our district at 1%. That would be $1.3 million, up to $1.3 million, only if we earn the FTS growth. And right now, we're looking as, as if we're going to be about flat or just a little bit, so we'll sort of keep an eye on that. Physical plan and instructional equipment, it's $5.3 million, these are one-time funds that have restrictions, only for scheduled maintenance and for instructional equipment. And then mandated cost reimbursements, 2.6 million one-time funds, down significantly from our current year's amount. So that's just a sneak peek, obviously, that'll be, you'll, you'll hear a lot more next month when we do our budget report, thank you.
Thank you. IVC Classified Senate.
Hi, good evening. We just, last Friday, we finished up our spring learning lunch series that the Professional Development Committee organized. They are busy organizing, we're going to take a break over the summer as far as that series goes, we have some other ideas in mind. But we are also busy planning for the same learning lunch series to pick back up in the fall. We have scheduled an end-of-the-year recognition lunch, next Thursday, May 26th, if you can come out to IVC, it'll be from 11:30 to 1:00. It's just our annual luncheon where we bring together classified staff and some of the other people on the campus to just thank them for their support and just to recognize the, the classified staff who've been able to participate in the Classified Senate over the year. We are also, our Professional Development Committee is busy organizing its first Professional Development Summit on June 30th at Oak Creek Golf Club, that's right. And we are, David Bougat is working with us to develop a presentation in which we are going to tie in the chancellor's, statewide chancellor's office professional learning network. We really want to continue to push and encourage use of that portal to help people kind of get on track with a professional development, keep track of their professional development opportunities across the state. We will also have Patrick Taylor, who is now the Director of the Performing Arts Center, he's going to come out and do a session with the participants on being an effective presenter. And that will include speaking with a PowerPoint presentation, how you effectively present, incorporating that technology, as well as how to present with groups. So that will be a very hands-on kind of presentation, all of these are going to be very interactive. And we are really hoping, we're very excited about this, and we're hoping to make this the inaugural summit and can continue with this over the next several years. So have a good evening, thank you so much.
Thank you. And bringing us to the end, CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, CSA would like to welcome student trustee Ford, welcome aboard. We want to also thank the Board of Trustees for approving and accepting the CSA Master Agreement. This is something that we don't take for granted, it's been a long process. On our side, we actually began this process in the winter of 2014. We don't realize how much time goes by until we look back on all the work that was done. And we know that the preparation on both sides and the work done on both sides got us to come to an agreement. It was one of the fastest sessions that we really had in order to come to this agreement, even though the time had gone by. But this tells about the cordiality and the professionalism and the respect that both sides had for each other, and that's what we felt. I definitely want to be able to thank the district team for being able to come together and, and actually work out an agreement with us. I certainly want to thank my own team, my fellow negotiating team, Jan Mistrangelo, Jerry Doolittle, Vincent Cooper, Shannon Morehouse, and even all of our alternates. And we had research work done by Nathan Quoc and Dean Lambo, who also came to the table, as well, also Jennifer Bonkowski, who was there on the very first session. We also want to thank our lead negotiators, Guillermo Santucci and Cecilia Lopez from the CSA Orange Field Office to help us navigate through these sometimes challenging issues. We have Classified School Employees Week, which is this week. We're looking forward to recognizing our fellow classified employees, we have a, a continental breakfast tomorrow morning for them. And also, too, we have other activities that we have planned for them. And CSA is also looking forward to being involved in professional development, and we're looking forward to taking the lead in that, that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming tonight, remember commencement next week, I'm sure we'll see you all there, and have a great evening.